Good evening, I'd like to call the committee on special committee on assessment practices to order. We have invited guests this evening, Mr. Mike Solley and Mr. John Silvestri Esquire. Jared, would you please take role?
Mr. DiMarco.
Here.
Ms. Filiaji.
Here.
Mr. Bekowski.
Here.
Mr. Paul Mary.
Here.
Chairman Katina.
Here.
And I believe with us on the phone, we have Mr. Macy, Mr. Dewar, and Ms. Nakareti Chavkas.
Here.
Here.
I apologize, Mr. Fatoulis is sitting across from me.
And it's the hat.
It's the hat.
It's the hat. It is the hat. So we'll have approval of minutes 12479-22.
Most approve of minutes, the October 4th, 2022, meeting in the Special Committee on Assessment Practices.
So second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All as opposed? Motion carries. We're going to start with the agenda items and discussion topic. Obviously, this is the assessment practices discussion that we're going to be hearing from, obviously, Mr. Solley and Mr. Silvestri tonight. The way I envision this happening tonight is that I'm going to let Mike speak first because Mike's obviously been around for a number of years and can obviously talk to or can obviously talk to the whole assessment process overall, leading us into the Joffrey verdict or to the Joffrey. And at that point, Attorney Silvestri can take over at that point, or you two can sort of tag team that whole piece of it as well. So if that makes sense. So at this point in time, I'm just going to turn it over to you so you can start your presentation. By all means, come on up.
And Mr. Chairman, Mike, and you're very, very passionate, very knowledgeable about this subject.
Yeah.
But a lot of the layman and people that may be listening to recording for all the council members may not be. So try to walk us through this sort of in a, you know, a sort of step by step.
The CLR and step, I mean, you're going to need to really explain that.
I have good news for you. I teach a seven-hour continuing education course.
Okay.
So, and I was told by an expert to keep it at an eighth grade level, so I hope I'm not insulting anyone.
Three grades over us, okay?
That's a little what.
Mr. Chairman. Go ahead. Yes, Councilman Macy. I would appreciate that our speakers would explain any acronyms that they put out there for us. Thank you. Yep, they will.
Go ahead.
Here we go. Well, I have four points I want to make, and John Silvestri will join in, but I want to just start with what is a pressing matter right now. I'm going to give you the top four. I'm going to talk about the vacancy of a chief assessor for Allegheny County. You know, if you had the medical examiner, if you didn't have the medical examiner for 10 years, you know, you might have some problems. You need someone qualified to do this. This is a specialty field. We're going to talk about the chief assessor vacancy and why it's been vacant since January of 2013. All right. And then I'm going to talk about the Joffrey lawsuit, number two, and number three, I'm going to talk about the second chance appeals. You've probably heard me talk about that more than once, right? So I won't spend a lot of time on that, but it's necessary that that be done. Then I'm going to talk about the Board of Property Assessment Appeals and Reviews shutdown, where they shut down the hearings. But I'm going to start with number one. We brought this up in court. John Silvestri and I have worked, John Silvestri was my solicitor back in the 1990s. I was vice chairman of the Board of Property Assessment Appeals in New Year. We were in charge of the entire assessment system for Allegheny County. The assessors worked for the seven of us, the seven-member board. We heard appeals. We heard 10,000 appeals a year, pretty similar to what you see now. The only difference was I actually heard the appeals. I was on the Board of Appeals. I and the other six members heard 10,000 appeals. We had to work done by August. You know, somehow Home Rule Government came in and saying they were going to eliminate the red tape, but they started cutting the red tape lengthwise. And now you have the hearing officers, you have situations where everything is in arrears. Everything is decided, most of the appeals are decided in November, December, which means if you live in the city of Pittsburgh and you paid your taxes in January, and you paid your county taxes a few months later, in December, you're going to get a retroactive tax increase on the newcomer tax. All right. So expediency when we get.
Newcomer, newcomer tax, Mike. You just said newcomer tax.
Yeah, I coined the phrase years ago. I was before the Mount Lebanon Commissioners, and there were 50 people in the room that were angry that they bought homes in Mount Lebanon. And the Mount Lebanon Commission filed the previous year 400 appeals on new home sales in Mount Lebanon. Mount Lebanon won 399 of those appeals. I mean, it's pretty much a slam dunk. You buy a house, whatever the sales price is, 400,000, that's what the appeals board will slap on it. Okay, so that's why I called it the newcomer tax. I'm at the meeting and the Commissioner, the Mount Lebanon Commissioner said, quit calling it newcomer tax. And everyone started cheering, and I thought, I'm on to something because it identifies very clearly.
That's exactly what it was.
Yeah. It identifies very clearly what the flaw is in the base year system. You know, the county executive, I have a lot of respect for Mr. Fitzgerald, but I strongly disagree with his comments at the last meeting about stability in the system. There's no stability if you can't plan for your future and you're buying a home and you're, you know, Maddie Joffrey, I've been to her home. She was a client of mine that I just gave her advice. I told her she was going to lose, and she did. Her taxes doubled because she bought a house. Her taxes went from 3,500 a year to 9,000 a year, just because she bought a house in Allegheny County. And John Silvestri and I sued Allegheny County. We worked together on a case called Cohen Home 20 years ago. And we caught the appeals board cheating. It went all the way to the state Supreme Court and we won. So I'm just going to throw that up there to John, and I have a history of working together. We are not accepting any fees. We're not being paid by third parties. I'm just doing it because, as Sam said, I'm very passionate with this topic. Absolutely. So I want to talk about the chief assessor vacancy. We conducted the reassessment, the 2012 reassessment, some of you were here back then, 580,000 parcels. And we had to review the parcels, measure at least one-third of the parcels, the exterior of the properties, and place a value on 580,000 parcels. And we completed that project in 2012, and wow, I was let go in November of 2012. The chief assessor who worked for Tyler Technology, his name is Wes Graham. I'm going to bring his name up again. Wes Graham. Wes Graham was the chief assessor of Allegheny County. He would go into court with me before Judge Weddick, almost on a weekly basis, just reporting on how the reassessment was going. But Wes Graham had the professional credentials under the administrative code. He's a general appraiser, which is the highest, the best appraiser certification in the state. He's been certified for 30 years. He has conducted reassessments in Allegheny County. He was also in charge of the reassessment in Washington County. All right. And I talked to him last night, and I said, Wes, you know, I can't, what happened? And he said, well, Mike, I wanted to stay back in 2013. I told the county executive, I wanted to stay on in a permanent position with the county following the reassessment. And the county executive said, no. And fine. So Wes is gone. Shortly thereafter, Mr. Polarski, who works in the county manager's office, met with Dee Henin. Dee Henin was an IT person for the computer services. And he said, you are now the chief assessor for Allegheny County. We need someone to certify the assessment where we're beginning. Since that day.
Can you clear, I'm sorry, can you clarify who Dee Henin was at that time?
She was an IT manager.
She was a.
IT manager in computer services. She didn't have any background in valuation assessments.
So she had no qualifications?
She did not meet the qualifications. She was told that she was going to be here temporarily in that position. She stayed in that position almost nine years. That's temporary. Yeah. All right.
What are the qualifications?
Well, I got them right here. And John, if you want to go over them, John Silvestri?
Yes, the qualifications are holding the highest level of license for appraisal in the state of Pennsylvania, or holding the highest level of certification by the International Association of Assessing Officers, and also having 10 years of experience in assessing. Those are the county qualifications by ordinance.
And John will agree with me, Dee Henin did not fit in any of that. And she didn't apply.
I, if I can interject here.
Okay, John.
Dee Henin is a very good computer programmer. When I took her deposition, her statement under oath in the lawsuit, I asked her at the time that Polarski walked in on her and said, I'm appointing you chief assessor. I asked her, when that happened in 2013, had you ever assessed a property? Answer, no. Had you ever supervised an assessor? Answer, no. Do you have any education for supervising assessors? Answer, no. Have you ever done coding for the state government for the assessing ratio? Answer, no. Do you supervise coders? Answer, no. And then I fast forwarded to the year 2022 today, and I asked her if she did any of that today as she was sitting there under oath, being a witness, and all of the answers were no. And Steve Polarski knew this when he appointed her. I consider this appointment in the private sector something that would be considered abusive. Dee Henin was abused as an employee. That's my opinion. I'll stop now.
Okay, I'll move on.
Before, go ahead.
Is there any way we can get a copy of the depositions?
Yes, John.
Yes, I can email it. I have the deposition.
If you could, if you could email them to us so we can have distributed them to all the members of the committee, because I think that would be especially helpful to all of, I mean, as we go through this process, investigative process, so.
John will tell you this. I was going to be the first witness in court. And Judge Zeppe, who was the county solicitor at the time, said, Your Honor, we'll do a recount. You know what I mean by recount? We, you know, we reviewed the sales, maybe we made some mistakes and we'll redo it. So we never gave any testimony in open court. There's a perception out there that the Pittsburgh School District Appeal will somehow keep the common level ratio at 81-1. That will never happen. It's a hell-marid tax, as far as I'm concerned. That, you know, it's a shame that people have to wait for this, but I keep telling people I know, it's on layaway. You will see a common level ratio in the low 60s, period. So.
So, I'm sorry to interrupt you again. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mike. So the plaintiff's pretrial statement, there was, if what I'm hearing is correct, there was no response to basically the pretrial statement because the county, and I mean, please correct me, or I mean, you could.
John's the lawyer.
Okay, or John, I mean, John can, John can speak up, but there was no response to this because the county then went back and agreed to look at all of their facts and figures, or all of their figures, or how, what is the best, explain that process to me.
I think what you just said is what happened. The county did file their own pretrial statement. Both sides are supposed to do that about a week to 10 days before you actually go to hearing, but the county pretrial statement really didn't dispute because what we had already uncovered in the lawsuit was the fact that Allegheny County through, through a person who was the operations manager, called a meeting back in 2016 and gave a discussion about changing the computer program, which Dee Henin, her name comes up again, was at that meeting, gave instructions to change the computer program. What the computer program did was automatically report information to state government that inflated the assessing ratio. And as soon as the assessing ratio gets inflated, it causes people to be overtaxed. So Judge Zeppe knew this, and I have to give a phenomenal amount of credit to the integrity of Judge Zeppe as he was your solicitor. Because what he did after the lawsuit was ordered to go forward by Judge Hertzberg was he and the top assessing officials agreed that the computer program would be turned off. It was turned off in December of 2021. And all of the 2021 sales that were automatically reported to state government for the effect of inflating the assessing ratio were manually reviewed. The manual review brought the assessing ratio for 2021 sales down to 63.6, and that's an official from the state government. What was not done was going backwards to the year 2020. And when we were in the courtroom, it was actually solicitor, your assessment board solicitor, David Montgomery, who brokered the deal, he came to Judge Zeppe and me, and he said, hey, you guys, can't we settle this? And Judge Zeppe and I talked, and we said to the judge, we have an assessment, we have a settlement in theory. The judge put us in a different courtroom, and that's when we worked out where the county acknowledged already that the computer program had inflated the assessing ratio and that it was going to be manually reviewed. And for this manual review, the judge allowed the experts for the property owners to participate because there was no chief assessment officer. The county said, Judge Zeppe, as the solicitor, said, why do we need the experts of the property owners? And I replied to the judge, because there's no chief assessment officer, and our experts have the skill of the chief assessment officer. And the judge said, yes, you're all going to participate. I'll stop talking now.
And John, bottom line is, these experts, it's like calculating a batting average. You have, you just work the numbers and the numbers don't lie. When I was walking up here tonight for your first meeting, you know, I had this vision of yellow tape around the courthouse because I type the crime tip. And all I could think about was, I know every one of the players in this, and it starts with the chief assessor for Allegheny County the last 10 years, in my opinion, has been Mr. Polarski from the county manager's office. And he was in charge when I was there. You did what Mr. Polarski said. Now, the county executive has said many times that he doesn't want to have a reassessment. Ms. Henin, Dee Henin, we have a memo from her to the staff that you will eventually see saying, hey, we have to keep the common level ratio above 85%, or we'll probably have to have a reassessment. So they're following, you know, what's going on in the county. We have to keep it that way.
Who did that memo come from?
Dee Henin, the acting chief assessor. Is that right, John?
Yes, and if you want those memos, I'm glad to give them to you. The county produced those documents in the lawsuit.
Yes, if you could provide those to us, that would be, that would be helpful as well, please.
And there's another problem. A woman I hired, Jessica Garapola, some of you may know her. She's the head of administrative services. I love her to death. She's a good lady, but when she was deposed, she said that it wasn't necessary to have assessors perform the coding function. That means you or I could perform, well, I'm a state certified assessor. Anyone in this room could do the coding. The coding has everything to do with how much you will pay in taxes in an assessment appeal. You know, we're estimating probably inflated 20% inflation rate over the last seven years. I don't know if you've ever seen those commercials on TV, Eugene, you know, the water was bad. Yeah. I'm thinking, people, I have a nephew, Brian, I have a niece, Lindsay. They were hit with the newcomer tax years ago, three, four, five years ago. And I've told them, they cheated. The county cheated. And someday you're going to have reparations. I honestly believe that. I'm not a lawyer, but I believe that that people will get together, not John, or maybe somebody else, but people are going to say, you mean, they cheated me when they, when I bought a home? And the answer is yes, and we can prove it. Now, we didn't have to prove it in court, but hey, we're going to share it with you, and what you do with it is up to you. But, you know, one question I would ask the county executive, why didn't we have a qualified credential, code compliant chief assessor the last 10 years? You know, you're breaking the law. You know, I could see for a year or so, but I agree with John, it wasn't fair to Dee Henin, who recently retired.
Good question.
Yeah.
When you said manually, the numbers were done manually. Can you clarify the coding?
Yeah, if you bought a home, let's assume everybody in here bought a home and you put it up with the real estate company. I have to determine if I'm the coder, that it was a good sale, that you weren't selling it to relative.
The arms length.
Yeah, it's an arms-length sale.
Yes.
I'm glad you used that word because some people, you know, it's an honest-to-goodness sale. Buyer and seller don't know each other. It's listed with the real estate company. I use West Penn Multilist data. West Penn Multilist is the largest source for information. Any real estate company in Western Pennsylvania, most of them are members of West Penn Multilist. If I list a house today, and I work for ABC Realty, once I put it into the database, you have access to them, if you're working for a competing broker. I did the 2020 sales from West Penn Multilist in 2020 and came up with 16,000 sales. And John knows, I sent a letter today to Ken about the, I was going to testify that 97% of them are good sales. You have some short sales, you have foreclosures listed in there, you take them out. But if you put your home on the market and it's exposed on the market for a period of time, and another company comes in with a buyer and they buy, here's the problem. 16,000 sales in the West Penn Multilist in Allegheny County. The county coders only came up with 5,000 sales, and they were corrupt. In fact, when you coded.
Let me ask you a question.
Sure.
Clarify what you mean by corrupt. You talk about the file that they put together.
I was going to go in there.
Okay, all right, sure.
Okay, if you bought a house.
Mike, if I could give an example from deposition testimony.
Go ahead.
The coding is a technical process, but to boil it down for the purposes of our discussion, coders are supposed to examine each sale transaction, and that's what I meant when I said manually. A human being investigates every sale transfer that is recorded in the Recorder of Deeds or Department of Real Estate. A human being does that. That is manual coding. What was going on with the coding is if it is an arms-length sale in the open market, then it is a valid sale for the state government to use in calculating the assessing ratio. Arms-length, open market, and that's why Mike was talking about listed on multilist. When you go to sell your home or your investment property, you go to a professional, a Realtor, they list it publicly, and they list it at the highest price, and then there's that negotiation, and you have the bargain for the sale. As Mike said, in 2020, there were over 16,000 of them, but only 5,000 sales were submitted to the state government, and out of those 5,000, only about half were really open market sales. The other half were corruptly coded sales. An example of corruption is this. I transfer a property to my child. I'm afraid that the transfer will cause the assessment to go up. So I look up my assessment, and I put on the deed the assessed value of the property. And what the coders were doing is they were coding that non-arms-length, non-open-market transfer as a valid sale. And when they use the deed price, which my child didn't pay anything to me, and of course, it wasn't listed on the open market, I just wanted to give them the property because I'm getting old in my age, and they can use it. These coders coded it as an arms-length, open-market sale to be used for the assessing ratio, and that particular sale jacked up the assessing ratio. That is corrupt. The other corruption, I think we all know from the news, and that corruption is an invalid sale, according to the state government, is after a home is foreclosed. The bank resells the home. The homes that are resold, and I have, represent people who buy these. They've been stripped of plumbing, stripped of electricity. You can't turn the utilities on when you buy them after a foreclosure, so the prices are real low. That is not an arms-length type of sale. The coders were coding these, and the computer was coding these as valid sales for the assessing ratio. That is part of the corruption that went on. I'll stop talking. Yes.
Sam, if I were looking at your home that you bought, you paid 400,000 for it, and the, I would look at the screen and I would see what the 10-year-old assessment on it was. Say it's a $400,000 sale, arms-length, with an assessment of 200,000. The ratio is 50%. They were throwing those out because the ratio was low. They were instructed. In many cases, they were able to look at the screen and see two columns, the sale price and the assessment ratio. I don't care what the 10-year-old assessment is. If I'm coding a sale as arms-length, if you're buying a house, it's not important what the 10-year-old base year assessment is. They were actually doing that. You know, I believe there was an intent, and the effect was, we looked at the county revenues over the last six or seven years, John, $44 million that the county made from these newcomer tax appeals. It's a crime. I say it's a crime would happen, and it just infuriates me.
We're going to pause for a moment, Mike and John, and just, I want to open, we've heard a lot, obviously, up to this point.
Yeah.
It's a lot to digest.
It is.
So I'm going to open it up to questions at this point, basically.
So I'm going to open it up to questions at this point based on what we've heard so far. So we'll begin with Councilman DeMarco.
The State Board, okay, it comes up with the CLR.
Yeah.
You know, what's their requirement as far as the number of properties or, I mean, is there anything in statute that says, you know, all properties?
John and I are both going to give you answers. The way the law is written, it's a trust system. We trust that the county will give us the arm-length sales and then we'll crunch the numbers. But they don't, there's no oversight, zero oversight. John, you're up.
Yes, the state law for the state agency says that all sales are to be reported to the state agency. But keep in mind, the function of the state agency in receiving those sales is to provide information to the Pennsylvania Department of Education for school subsidies. That existed when I first became a solicitor for the Board of Assessment in nineteen seventy-eight. Then in the nineteen eighties, because there was so much controversy over the assessing ratio, they added to the state agency under an amendment to the law for them to calculate the common level ratio, which you've heard the acronym C L R, and I use the words assessing ratio. And what has happened over the course of time is instead of manual coding all of the sales under the Fitzgerald Polarsky administration of the assessing, what they went to was a computer to automatically, without manual coding or looking at it, send it to the state government. The, I'm going to add one more thing. The state law and the regulations say that you have to follow the science of applied statistics, which means you don't have to manually code thirty thousand. You can take a sample of every tenth one to examine and manually code, but no one does that. And when the state looks to calculate the assessing ratio, known as the common level ratio or known as the C L R, the state takes as the gospel's truth whatever the county does without any testing of the information, without any investigation that it's true. And as soon as the counties figured this out, they had the ability to, to use, to borrow Mike's word, cheat on the coding to keep the assessing ratio high. And that's what we found in this lawsuit.
When you did the suit, either in Miss Henan's deposition or in any other type of discovery, were you able to get a hold of the actual coding? Or did she explain exactly how it was coded to take in, remove, or to kick out? You know, anything that?
The answer is yes, but I'm going to let John into that because that's illegal. Go ahead, John.
The, the answer is yes, and I'll comment that it's not legal. What our experts did, uh, during the lawsuit, some of it before the lawsuit, is we downloaded from the county agency, all of the twenty twenty information that the county gave with the coding. We also downloaded from the Allegheny County website additional information of all of the same sales for twenty twenty that were given to the state agency. So you have a spreadsheet with the name of the buyer and the name of the seller. All that we did was a very simple sort of an Excel spreadsheet to group together everyone who had the same last names for buyer and seller. And we looked at the deeds. As Mike said, I do this pro bono. No one's hiring me, no one's paying me, this is my give back to society. So what I did is I hired high school students, I paid them fifteen dollars an hour and they looked up deeds for me where there was the same last name, buyer and seller. And what I learned reading the deeds, and you only have to read the first page of the deed, is you had a parent to child, a sibling to a sister. You had the executor of an estate who was a child, dealing to himself and his wife. These were the transactions that we knew were coded as valid sales that are not to be coded against the state agency regulations. So we have this list, I sent the list called interrogatory questions to the county government. They answered the list and their answers were, this was coded wrong. If we would recode it today, we would disqualify it. So if you want that document where the county answered that they did it wrong because the judge forced them to answer, I'm glad to share that with you.
Could you please provide that as well?
Yes.
Come on.
Councilman. Let you go, start to the tooth, so.
Okay. What infuriates me is that John and I and a group of other people did this pro bono. We shouldn't be the oversight for the Allegheny County assessment system. You know, that's what infuriates me. And what, what we're doing today is what we should have done in court. But the county said, oh, we'll do a recount. We did the recount, it took four months for the assessment office to play rope-a-dope recounting the sales, they ended up coming up with almost eleven thousand sales. So the ratio dropped from eighty-one-one to sixty-three-five-three. Just, God, that just infuriates me. That we did this and John is hiring high school kids to do the job that, that assessment office without a qualified credential administrative, it's in the ordinance. You have to have a credentialed, qualified chief assessor overseeing this. But it was overseeing two hundred feet from this room across the hall. And that's what infuriates.
It's only illegal if you get sued.
Well, it's just wrong then. All right, how's that?
Councilman Paul Mary.
Spoils your mind.
A lot of information.
Yeah.
I, um, so if we had, if we had a, a chief assessment officer, a professional in place.
Yes.
This would have never happened.
Yes, and I have one. You can hire him tomorrow, the council could hire him.
It's the, the lack of having a qualified person at this position is what opened up Pandora's box here.
Oh, yeah, you know, it's the thing about character, what, what you do when no one's looking. That's, this is what happened here. We don't need, when Wes Graham said he wanted the state, he was credentialed, they don't want somebody that knows what they're doing. They prefer to run it over here like a marionette, just, uh, that's my personal opinion. And that infuriates me because it affected forty thousand some people over the last six, seven years in appeals, the newcomer tax appeals, and they're all still paying more than they should be paying because of this process.
That's forty-four million dollars that the county.
Collected.
Collected. If it was done correctly, you have any idea what the estimate would be?
No, because John and I and our team only looked at twenty twenty. We'll be glad to do it for you for every year, but I'm telling you, somebody will come in and look at the last six, seven years and we're right. If we're right on that one year, they didn't make a mistake one year. They've been making it since, since John said they changed it.
Since thirteen.
Well, well, thirteen, yeah. Once Wes Graham left the county, uh, Dee Henan, who's a wonderful lady, didn't apply for the job, was in charge. And she admitted under oath, she never assessed anything, she didn't supervise anyone. Well, who did? You know?
And again, I just want to remind the members of the committee, this is obviously fact-finding at this point.
Right.
I mean, we're not passing judgment on anything or anyone. We're strictly following the facts and seeing where they may lead us and listening to all the testimony that's being provided. And then come to, at the end of the day, we'll have a decision-making process, obviously, and, and make recommendations. But at this point in time, I mean, we're not passing, just to remind everybody, we're not passing any type of judgment on anybody. Everyone needs to keep an open mind and we follow the facts. So on that, Councilman, we'll go back to you, Nick, because Councilman Mikowski is actually on the committee.
And no, I don't have anything, thank you.
Councilman Tietzels.
Maybe it's a bit.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I totally said.
Going far for the course, but that's okay. Um, thank you. Uh, I guess my question, can, you, we're talking since twenty thirteen. Is the, is the date that you put out there, the year you put out there? Can this be calculated back to twenty thirteen? I know it would take a long time, like you did, the procedure that you did, that you implemented in twenty twenty. Can it be done for all of those years?
Yeah.
Okay, it would take a long time, I'm not saying.
Absolutely.
But it, that data is all still around, can be done.
Well, I would ask the administration, because we have some evidence that they may have trapped some, some of the data that they knew that we wanted. So I would ask the administration for the data that we looked at for twenty twenty. If, 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 if it's there.
It can be, the calculations can be.
But I have to share this with you, even though we did a pro bono, I, John and I and Barbara Stern have been working on this for two years just to get to this point, to get a common police court judge to say that that common level ratio is way off. You know, eighty-one-one to sixty-three-five, and the judge was losing his patience with the county when the county said, oh, it took us four months, we, we need more time to. And he said, no more, no more time. Yeah, John, what's the common level ratio? That's how, that's my perception of how it ended up, that we're the county, we, you know, I used to manage the assessment office and then I, I was getting reports from the assessment office a few months ago under a court order. Shouldn't have to be that way.
And essentially, though, what you're doing is asking counsel to a certain degree to like wave a magic wand and get rid of that red tape, get rid of those obstacles that.
Make a new job.
Well, right, and, and, and if they won't, then at the very least, the information is available for the job to get done for the residents of Allegheny County. This is not a, we are not getting into a, a contest, a, you know, what kind of contest between the two branches, the branches of government here. We're ultimately sitting here with our time for the residents of Allegheny County, okay? So I'm trying to be part of a solution, which I know you are.
Yeah.
And remove the frustrating aspect of this and wave as much of a wand as we can and say, okay, so we've got the data, let's figure this out and then move forward, right? Isn't that what your hope is ultimately?
Yes, but moving forward means having a qualified chief assessor.
No question.
And, and, and I talked to Mr. Graham last night, he said he would be happy to come back. You know what he said to me? It made me laugh. He said, Mike, well, I'd be working for the judge or Mr. Fitzgerald because he knows how serious this is. I shared with him what I'm sharing with you tonight, what John and I are sharing. He said, hey, you can't do that. And he said, Mike, get us multilist. You know, I was in charge of the oversight on the two thousand one and twenty twelve reassessments. We had the West Penn Multilist database, which gives you the information, that's the information John and I use. All right, the county doesn't have that. Do you know why? They don't have a qualified person to get the subscription. I could get it tomorrow if I had a qualified general appraiser go with me to the West Penn Multilist meeting. The board of directors of the Multilist know me. You know, I used to work for Mr. Henan and all that. And I was able to get the multilist information in, in two thousand, uh, one and twenty twelve. After Wes Graham left the county, I didn't know this, that was it. The multilists, the, the assessors didn't have the multilist anymore. Now, was that an accident or by design? I don't know. But moving forward, fix it now, moving forward. And then the backward part, you're talking about councilwoman, yeah, I agree.
Because they, they are, there are parallel paths here to a certain degree, and you've got to address both, right? So, yeah, the, the assessor.
Councilwoman, I was talking about my nephew and my niece. They're locked in a base year that is artificially high, a high tax bill and they won't see any relief for years because the county executive said there won't be a reassessment. Fine. You, you don't have to have your reassessment, but get the ratio right on the appeal. You agree with me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Tietzels.
This is still pretty much like, like, like a fog for me as far as this ratio and, you know, how, how this is all panning out because when you call it the, the newcomer tax, I always thought it was just based on, you bought a house that was assessed at two hundred thousand and somebody lived in it for forty years and somebody came along and bought it for four hundred thousand. Well, now your house is worth four hundred thousand, not two.
Right.
But that's the part that I'm confused, we talk about these ratios and.
Well, here's the thing.
I went to the appeals myself in two thousand and twelve. And specifically, the, the appeals officer said, well, Mr. Tietzels, you paid this much for your house and we're assessing you less than what you paid, what are you complaining about?
But Councilman, in twenty twelve, you didn't know what the house would be worth in twenty twenty-two. Yes. Okay, once we know what it's worth in twenty twenty-two, we're still locked in with that low assessment from ten years ago. So if I buy a house for a hundred thousand with a fifty thousand assessment, that ratio is fifty percent right now.
Yes.
And the appeals board, for, for the last six, seven years, have been applying eighty-some percent to that and jacking it up that much.
Okay.
That, does that make sense?
It starts to, yeah, it just, it's, it's difficult.
Yeah, see, um, it's inside baseball stuff, yeah, but so either John, Barbara and I, our team is correct or the county did it right, or the judge.
May, may, may I, may I interject, may I interject something? Um, this, this is purely mathematical and I'll try to explain it because I myself am not good at math. But what I do know is that as prices go up in the aggregate, if you look at all of the sales in a year, and we hear this especially the last several years on TV. They talk about how home prices have dramatically gone up year after year for the last three years. Well, as the home prices go up, the assessing ratio goes down. That's just mathematics. But the reason why you have to have an accurate assessing ratio is because the Pennsylvania Constitution says everybody should pay taxes on a uniform basis. And what the assessing ratio does is as prices go up and the assessing ratio goes down, it approximates what the base year twenty twelve assessment is. So a live example, someone called me up and said, at the beginning of this year and said, the school district appealed me. My neighbor said I should talk to you. I said, what was your price? I'm given the price. Uh, I said, what's your assessment? I'm given the assessment. I said, our experts tell me that the assessing ratio is about sixty-five percent if it's done correctly. Multiply your purchase price by the sixty-five percent and what do you get? You get very close to the current assessment. And that's what equalization and uniformity is about under our constitution. As soon as you start reporting the information to calculate that assessing ratio to skew it higher, then you have a minority, a very small minority of people who are paying more than their fair share. It's like the go-free plaintiff that Mike Suley talked about. If the assessing ratio for her property was correctly applied, she was probably under assessed at thirty-five hundred dollars in twenty twelve. But she certainly shouldn't be paying nine thousand dollars. Now, she should probably be paying close to around four thousand dollars. The assessing ratio is supposed to make it so that everyone on the street, everyone in the community, everyone in the county is paying not more than their fair share.
And John, uh, Adeline Joffrey, our lead plaintiff, one of her neighbors knocked on her door and said, I was just appealed by the school district. Now, that appeal hasn't been heard yet. But this was a piece that we did, I did with Andy Sheen on TV. I'm just going to give you two numbers. There's a picture of the house. This is our lead plaintiff's neighbor. They bought a house last year, it was appealed this year by the school district. It hasn't been heard yet. If the ratio is 81.1%, which Steph said it was, their taxes would go up almost $2,300. Do you see that?
Hmm.
If we're right, John and I are correct, and the ratio is 63.5, she would get a $945 tax refund. That's why.
I I I have a correct, Mike, I have a correction to what you said. It is not whether Mike and John are correct, it's whether the county is correct. And the reason is that when we went to court, when we went to court on September 9th, and there's a transcript already typed up of what happened on September 1st, Allegheny County presented to the judge, it's 10,116 sales that it said after manual review, these are the valid sales for the assessing ratio. And they went, because the county is adverse to my property owner clients, the county went out of its way to say, these are our, not the plaintiff's experts' figures, these are our office of property assessment figures. And and I said to the judge, well, we've calculated it's 63.5. The judge turned to the county assistant solicitor and said, is that in the ballpark? And she said, yes. And she added to it, she said, Judge, if you order us to give our figures what we think is right, forgetting about what the property owners say, then we will not appeal. And of course, the county didn't appeal. So the 63.5 is not a Mike Sully or John Silvestri or a property owner's experts' number. It is what the county calculated under the court supervised consent order.
So Councilman Macy, are you are you out there, do you have any questions?
He's gone.
Councilman Duer?
Uh, I do not have any questions, President Katina. I am, like some of my colleagues, trying very, very hard to wrap my head around this, which is why I wanted to attend tonight. Um, but I appreciate the presenters and laying this out in a in a methodology that, um, you know, I think all of us can at least begin to wrap our heads around. So thank you to both of you for making this somewhat palatable for me in terms of understanding uh the the depth and all of the different intricacies of this particular issue. So appreciate it.
Councilwoman Chappius?
I'm sorry, President Katina, did you call my name?
Yeah, did you have any questions?
I do have one question, uh, thank you. Uh, so related to the individual who has served in that capacity for nine years in a temporary role, has any vested in that individual in terms of any professional development and training to get the skills and the expertise for what's needed for that role? Or frankly, department who would need the professional development to be able to have those qualifications?
Mike, do you want to answer, do you want me to answer?
Well, if if what, if your question, councilwoman, is did she have some professional education during the nine year period, the answer is yes, but it was nowhere near what the administrative code says are the credentials. And I'll let John add to that, but again, she's retired since this began. And but there was no effort to make her or appoint, the county manager appoints the chief assessor. Okay, that's the way the code's written. That, there was no plan, I believe, to make her chief assessor. And and again, when you have a new county executive come in, I've worked for three county executives and the commissioners. Every time a new administration comes in, they clean house, they get new people in there, and the methodology changes. That's what's frustrating. If that's why Mr. Graham said, if I'm the chief assessor and he's councilwoman, he's qualified right now. If he would have walked in tomorrow, he could run the department, the people know him. His only problem is, well, when Mr. Fitzgerald leaves next year, am I going to be fired? That's his problem. So again, that's something for this council to consider. You know, I have a suggestion, John has one. My suggestion is that the chief assessor be appointed for a six year term and you can't fire him or her. If they're qualified, let them do their job and get the hell out of the way. John, you have a suggestion?
You know, I didn't hear that suggestion, Mike. Uh, I liked your suggestion better than mine. My my suggestion was because I worked for Tom Forrester, I worked for Bob Cranmer. Uh, both of them are no different than Mr. Fitzgerald. They called us over to their courthouse offices and they told us what they wanted to do with the assessments. Uh, in that sense, uh, I don't blame Mr. Fitzgerald any more than I'd blame Mr. Cranmer or Mr. Forrester. It's like you're walking your hound dogs and they see squirrel and they can't help themselves but to go after the squirrel. In this case, it's the assessing ratio. Uh, but to answer the councilwoman's question, uh, what Dee Henin testified to was, yes, she took the certification course to become a assessment uh professional at that lower level. Uh, and I don't say lower level to demean it, I say there are three levels of appraisal. The bottom rung level uh is for an assessor's course. She also took some courses from the International Association of Assessing Officer. But when I said to her, and I've been asked to give the deposition, so it'll be available for you to read, did you ever use what you learned to teach a seminar or a workshop? And the answer was no. Did you ever supervise anyone or give trainings? The answer was no. So what I see in this is she went to have training to build up what looks like a resume. But in the trenches, she was not allowed to use it because she was not allowed to supervise anyone in the process.
Thank you for that explanation.
Councilman Macy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I'm just curious, thanks, Mike and John. Uh, what do the financial institutions play in this assessment situation? Because they may be able to, they may lose money as well because the um, the loan may be less than what the value of the property is.
I'm not sure I understand the question.
I don't think it's related, Bob, to what we're talking about. I I all I can tell you is your finances are all screwed up if you buy a house and your taxes double the following year. That's all, doesn't matter what the bank says.
I actually warn people that that's going to happen to them.
Yeah, but they don't know how bad it's going to happen.
Anything else, Councilman Macy, any other questions?
No, thank you, thank you for everybody.
Okay. It this Councilman Futulis?
I'd like to clarify something for my own branch.
Sure.
We're talking about this assessment ratio.
Yeah.
In in my world, is it based the same as the mileage rate would be in a community?
No. Well, yeah, it's a fixed number, is that what you mean? If that's what you're saying.
The ratio is what you need.
The appeals board applies a flat ratio of 63.5 to the market value of every property they hear. Yeah. Here's here's another problem that John will bring up. You know, this appeal shutdown that Mr. Montgomery talked about, I'm sorry to say, you know, I have a lot of respect for him, but he was a little less honest about how independent that group is. Uh, there was no vote to shut that down. And there are no appeals being heard by the Board of Property Assessment Appeals and Review. But at the Board of Viewers through common police court, the appeals are going on. So you have one branch over here saying that we're not doing anything. And John, you might want to allude to what ratio are they using in the courts?
It depends. The last appeal that we briefed, we looked at the law and we applied the ratio of 63.6 for 2022 and 2021 and 63.5 uh for 2020. Uh, that that that's what we did after we did a briefing to the judge in a particular Board of Viewers appeal. There was a hearing, uh, the hearing uh came out and used 87.5% across the boards for 2019 through 2022. And after we briefed it, uh, and were ready to go to the judge, we ended up, both both sides, the school district, solicitor and myself agreed to use the correct assessing ratios.
Okay, we're over on the hour at this point in time, so I'll I'll ask one last, if they want to have any last question.
Just one last thing. I was curious, when you said Judge Zeppe was involved in one of these hearings, he was our solicitor.
No, he was the solicitor at the time.
He was the solicitor.
At the time.
He wasn't the judge.
He's never ever seen this. I refer to him as Judge. His current status. And he was on, he was, he was, he worked with us during this. And he he knew what we what we shared with you tonight. Solicitor, then solicitors.
Very much aware.
Yes. Yes, he was.
Okay. Tonight, I'm going to recess our meeting rather than adjourn it. Um, so we'll stand in recess at this point in time. And then next week, we will probably be back at it, I don't know which day yet, though, so. Okay, we didn't get through, obviously, I like I told you at the beginning, there's a lot to get through, so. If you could get, if you two could get us all of that information for the deposition, with any statements or any emails or what have you, we'd appreciate it.
It'll be a lot of.
Yep, anything that you have, we'll say.
No assessment hearings.
They stopped.
Then the court didn't order that, they stopped them, Mr. Montgomery ordered them. Okay, the board didn't even vote on.
I'm trying to read the newspaper, it says they stopped them.
Yeah, they really should because they're going on across the street and then they're stopped here. What are they waiting for? They can still have a hearing and find. Right, right, I want to visit them on Thursday, huh? Yeah, thank you, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.